So I guess we'll start the meeting. It is a regular meeting of council for Thursday, November 28th, 2024. It's at six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted as circulated. Could I have a mover, please?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Patkan moves. Can I second her? Councilor Bichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
This is to do with the request from the soccer club, which is from Greg Morris, FCNW Soccer Program. I wonder if we could talk about that.
Okay, what item does you want that in? Is there an item to put in?
Uh, you can use your discretion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda also with the soccer club. Any other comments, questions? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we add that as the addendum resolution?
Yes, that's number three, right? Okay. We're resolved that the council accept the following additions, deletions, and or changes to the agenda. The soccer topic to the agenda. Can I have a mover, please?
Some move.
Councilor Pat, uh, Flyburn moves. Can I second her, please? Councilor Bichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Number four, those opening remarks. I'd just like to express our gratitude to Gashman School. My wife and I, we were at the Wally celebrations on November 9th, Saturday, November 9th, and they presented West St. Paul within a plaque for appreciation for their support. So it's very nice. I have the plaque at home. I'll bring it in in the next couple of days. So that was very nice that they did that. Takes us down now to number five. There's nothing else.
Also, maybe we should, as a council, extend our sympathies to Councilor Posthumus in East St. Paul.
Yes.
The loss of his son-in. I mean, our thoughts and prayers are with them, and I'll be attending, I think, December 6th is a funeral at Spring, so I'll be attending that. And it's a great loss to our community, so.
Yes, it is.
Our hearts will.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flyburn. We'll go down to number seven. Takes us down to number seven, confirmation minutes, 7.1. Committee of the whole minutes, whole meeting of November 12th. Be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held on November 12th be approved. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll second.
Councilor Bichetti moves. Councilor Flyburn seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Go down to 7.2. Be it resolved that the regular meeting of, sorry, start over again. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on November 14th be approved. Could I have a mover, please?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Patcan moves. Can I have a second or?
I'll second.
Councilor Bichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, there's no delegations, nothing on bylaws. Accounts receivable. We go to accounts, 10.1. Accounts received for information. Anyone have any questions on the accounts? Hearing none. Does a visa account? Does anyone have any questions on the visa account? Hearing none, we'll go down to number 11. Payroll monthly statements. Be it resolved that the payroll of the month of October, the month of, as follows, be approved as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
Move.
Can I have a, Councilor Flabber? Second her?
I'll second her.
Councilor Patcan seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Carry. Okay, so there's nothing on monthly statements. Okay. Nothing on CEO report, no communications. General business. Do you want to talk about the soccer at this point, Councilor Flyburn?
Well, I think that we all got the email from Greg Morris, and Greg Morris is one of our fire captains, and he does a lot of work in the community and the soccer club. And it's really expensive for kids to play soccer. I wasn't aware of this, but about $1,600 for one player. So, and $100,000 to make it. So, he's asked for his support. So, probably we need to, um, give him about $1,000 from our fund, from discretionary fund development, some of the soccer activities in our community, and to go towards some of the kids in our community, so.
Anything else? Anything else?
Yeah, I'd be willing to provide $500 towards the fund. Could it be the same as Councilor Patcan?
Yeah, me as well.
Okay, and myself also. 500. So it's 500 each. Okay, so now we go down to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is this a resolution or direction to administration?
Guess we can make it a resolution. If you could make a resolution for us, that would be appreciated.
Do you want a resolution?
Typically, when you've been approving sponsorships often. Okay. Did you do something simple, like be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul authorize the FCN Soccer Club with sponsorship in the amount as follows? And then we'll list from the community initiatives, from Council Flyburn, 1,000, and then each other number of council, 500, which would be a total of 3,000.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great resolution. I'll follow and make the motion.
Okay, Councilor moves it or second her?
Councilor Patcan.
Councilor Patcan seconds it. Any comments, questions? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is 15.1. Is Bill 42. I asked her, or MLO, if she could, oh, she's got it up on the screen. Thank you very much. So I guess, just to give you an update, we had a meeting this morning at the WMR. Basically, Bill 42 is now called Bill Number Four. Parliament, this was, bill was submitted, the reason it's Bill Number Four now is because it was, Bill 42 was submitted in the last session of legislative. And since they had the pub, Crown Speech, was a creation of a new legislation. So now this is a new legislation. So they will be reintroducing this bill as Bill Four. Question is, is that they think it's going to be still the same bill. There are a couple highlights in this bill that they did talk about. Had to do with direction for municipalities. I'm going to just ask if she can move the screen up a bit. So yeah, they do, okay, here, this is it. So Bill was, Bill 42 was introduced in November. Now it's Bill Number Four. It's a, was instructed to change the Planning Act and its administrative report and was attached to it. So if we can go to the next slide. Yeah, this is the changes to the membership. So right now, the Bill Four will, or Bill 42 was currently going to have all municipalities continue as members of the WMR unless a withdrawal request was made. And that request had to be done by council of the resolution. That had to be done before the next meeting, which was, next election, which was 2026. If we're gonna, if councils are going to wait till after 2026. It's the next slide, please. Council must have a, must, well, option one is council resolution is required, public hearing. There's no public hearing required. Minister will change the Capital Planning Region membership by regulation, and there's no action taken. And if there's no action taken to this first option, then you need option number two, which means that after 2026, the plan review will be completed in every, there's be a plan review completed every 10 years. It takes 180 days before that plan review. Council will have to submit a resolution, have a public hearing, and then the minister will decide if the municipality will be able to withdraw from the MRW. We go to the next slide. All non-member municipalities can request to join or rejoin, which means that if a municipality wants to rejoin, they have to have a resolution at the time and a public hearing. Continue on, please.
I have a question for you on that.
Go ahead.
So if, if, if a municipality decides to withdraw before 2026 and then decides, for whatever reason, new information comes to light that they want to rejoin, they can rejoin at any time?
No, they have to wait till, so every 10 years, the WMR or Capital Region is supposed to review their zoning bylaws. That's the maximum they can go. There could be public, there could be zoning bylaw changes in between that. So they have to submit 180 days before that review starts that they want to join with the resolution. But then they're going to need a public hearing. So the most that they're going to wait is 10 years.
But the, but slide number 10 says, what does that mean when they say they can join at any time? Like the next slide.
If you really, if you move, if you leave, you can come back.
Right, at any time?
No.
No?
No.
That's why.
That's what your slideshow says.
Can we request to join?
At any time?
Yes. They must, that's not what we were told. I see what you're saying. Well, they would need a public hearing. They still need a public hearing. They still need a council resolution. So.
Well, I think we have to have a meeting to decide whether or not this is even being part of the capital regions even in our best interest. The only thing that we do with the Capital Planning Region is they tell us how we should, what we should put in our communities for density, housing density, and they can dictate where things should go. And I would like to see our council and our people have the choice of where things should go and how they should, what density should be here.
Yeah, I think that's, will be for another time. It's not for this time.
Well, I know it is for another time, but I think that we have to seriously consider, what is WMR giving us?
No, that's right.
That we should stay in there.
I'm just going to continue on with the slide. So when they talk about.
They talk over me, that's okay.
So when I talk about continuing, or continuing, or whatever the word is, means that first, all municipalities have to be connected before they can join, but now they're not allowing them to be connected. So in other words, if West St. Paul withdraws, St. Andrews still can join. Otherwise, before that, St. Andrews can join until West St. Paul join.
Why would that be?
It's not contiguous.
Contiguous, yes, that's the word. Thank you.
You mean as far as area?
No boundaries. Boundaries have to.
Well, that's the same thing, the areas.
Yeah, it has to be, has to be together. That's what it said.
Yeah.
Next slide, please. Still required on existing. So currently, drinking water and wastewater plan is still required by all municipalities. The regional plan, regional plan still requires, are still required for CP, Capital Region Planning requirement plans. The requirement of plans are unchanged. The WMR will need to submit a regional plan to January, by January 1st, 2027. Proactive date would be for the new deadline. This means that January 2025 deadline would no longer be applicable regardless of when Bill 42 passed. So in other words, we had a public hearing process. The part of that process was there had to be a bill submitted by the end of this year. That will no longer be required once this becomes, receives oral assent. And I think, is that anymore? Process. Okay, continue, first reading, second reading as referred, okay, to standing committee. So this is all the steps that we're going to take for Bill 42. I believe it will still be the same with Bill Four. Opportunities for stakeholders to provide committees. So in other words, they're just saying that they're going to be looking for written submissions and oral presentations when they start on the new process. If the bill is passed, no law is necessary. It's still required oral assent. And oral assent, when it comes, it comes in force immediately on, comes in force immediately upon oral assent. And I think that is, then, that's it, that's it. So next was questions and then continue. Go ahead.
So if we decided as a council to not join this, did they say anywhere how it would affect funding? Would higher governments look at, you know, people in the WMR prior to municipalities? Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I know.
At first, they said through all that, that that's where they would start looking at, you know, the funding models through.
Yes.
Through the plan, right? So I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that they don't, you know, after, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be municipalities that opt out, but I'm just wondering if we're going to lose out anywhere, those municipalities are going to lose out anywhere?
Yeah, they didn't say anything. They haven't gotten into that. And I guess that's, they're still trying to sort through all of this stuff, but I just brought this forward because they had this meeting in November. And then since that time, there was a change in the deputy minister, the minister. So now we have a new minister and a new deputy minister. And now they changed the bill from Bill 42 to Bill Four. So there's still a lot of moving parts, and I guess it still needs to be sorted out during when they go into Bill Four discussions. Maybe some of the questions that we have to raise.
Well, that's the question I asked. What are we, what are we losing?
We don't know yet.
So we're not discussing it then, right?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm just bringing this forward to let you know where everything was standing.
Well, this, this bill says that it comes into force December 14th, 2024. Section one.
No, if you look at it, there's probably two sections to that. What comes in force is the Capital Region needs to develop plan, and they have two years to redevelop that plan. And that plan, it has to be submitted by January 1st, 2027. If I bring it up. So that is, and specifically when it comes, if you look to the bottom of, can you bring up Bill 42 there, please?
Yeah, I looked at it from the agenda?
Uh, okay.
Or, gee, just mean earlier. I'm sorry.
No, you know what? Okay, so if we, on your screen, if you go all the way down to the bottom, go to the last page. It says coming in force, coming into force. Coming into force, oral assent, 12 point, 12 dash one, that is the Planning Act. And then on the bottom, it says coming into force, December 14th. Section 11, if you scroll up to section 11, you'll see what section 11 has to do with, despite subsection 10.3, the planning, the Planning Act and any other provisions of this act, the Capital Planning Region must approve and adopt its initial regional plan by January 1st, 2027, or the prescribed later date, if such later date is prescribed by regulation. So what, coming in force December 14th, 2024, 12-2 is saying is that when section 11 comes into force, if, comes into force on December 2024, if this act receives oral assent after that date, section 11 is deemed to have come into force on December 14th, 2024.
Yeah.
So now they're, they're showing that they're legal, that the Capital Planning Region has two years to submit this plan.
Right, but they're continuing to go on with all of the dates and so forth of Plan 2050. So why are they doing that then?
No, they're not continuing on with the dates because the.
Then why is Jennifer Ferguson saying that we have deadlines that we have to meet according to Plan 2050? That our inspections have to be turned around in so much time, and our applications have to be turned around in so much time?
I believe that is dealing with Bill 37. This is WMR. Nowhere in here do you see anything about.
So you're saying Bill 37 is, is a WMR bill? That's Plan 2050, right?
Bill 37 incorporates this, but when it comes to inspections, this is, nowhere in this regulation does it say anything about inspections and.
Right, but.
This is only, this is only the organization of the Winnipeg.
Right, so the question I'm asking, because you're part, you're on the board, is if we remove ourselves from, from this WMR, then Bill 37 doesn't affect us anymore?
I think it still does. I'm not sure, to me, Bill 37 still affects us.
If we're not part of the Capital Region, though?
You know, I'm not too familiar with Bill, I've read Bill 37. I know it does talk about the Capital Region. I know it's a section of the bill, the Capital Region is a section of Bill 37. But if you take a look at this document that's in front of you right here, which is what they're talking about, which is what they're going to change, this is what, this is, this is a separate document, Bill 42.
But this is only a bill to withdraw from WMR. Right, so what I'm asking is if we draw, withdraw from WMR, are those other things then going to continue to apply to us? Does Bill 37 continue to apply to us if we're not part of WMR? Because that was for the Capital Region.
Like I said, that, I know what Bill 37 says. I recall all of it. I haven't studied it. I can't answer your question directly. All I can see here is that Bill 37 is an overall bill. Capital Region is incorporated into that bill. But this doesn't talk about the Bill 37.
Well, that's something we should find out, is how would Bill, would Bill C. 37 affect us?
Yes.
And if we withdrew?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
I think this is good that we're, that we're reviewing this bill. And I agree that there's some questions that the council has regarding funding and, you know, some of the ramifications with regards to Bill 37 and how it's associated with whatever decisions we make regarding this bill. So I think it might be a good idea to advance some questions that you can collect from council and present it and seek some answers.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So this is January 1st, 2027, but did it not say on there from the WMR that they would need a reply back by January 1st, 2025 then?
That is, that is the existing public hearing that went, which hasn't been finished. So what the WMR is going to do is they're going to write up a letter to their minister saying that they will not be able to, to complete the bill by 2025 as a legal matter, and from then, see what the minister does.
So what kind of deadline does an RM have to opt out at this point? There's just too many dates back and forth and there's no to-the-point section inside there, so.
Oh, there's October 20, uh, it did say here in the bill.
And October 2026.
Yeah, October 2026. That's the deadline. That a municipality has the option to opt out without having a public hearing. All they need is a resolution.
Yeah, I mean, the Bill 37, the first thing it does is define the Planning Region and the Capital Region. So it's called the Capital Planning Region CPR. So that's what Bill 37 is about. I just want to know, and I think we have to ask the question, for if we remove ourselves from the Capital Planning Region, then do all of these regulations not apply to us at that point? Because we've been locked into these regulations, which I've never been thrilled with. So what are the ramifications? Do we walk away from all of these restrictions that they're trying to apply to us? So, you know, if we, if we walk out of WMR and CPR, then how would our planning go? Would we be in control of it? That's what I want to know. And I know if staff can find out about that or how we find out about that, but that's the kind of information that we need in order to make that decision. And then, of course, does that affect our funding with the province? I don't think that it would. I don't think that it's an issue for them. If they're giving us the option to opt out, then I don't, I don't think that it's, it's an issue. I have never liked Plan 2050. I would prefer not to be in it. So if we can find out what the ramifications are, that'd be great.
We can follow up. Maybe I'll, I'll discuss with Mayor as well in terms of follow up with WMR with the ramifications that would be with Bill 37. What we can do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Takes it down to 15.2, the Canada Reserve Fund Transfer.
Yes, so this is, this is a report proposing the transfer surplus funds to the Canada Day Reserve Fund. In 2024, we had revenues consisting of a grant from Heritage Canada of 33, or $2,360. We had donations and sponsorships just under $49,000 and an operating grant, or an operating, a contribution from the operating budget of $50,000. Expenses of supplies were just over $71,000 and just under, for, just under $12,000 for labor. And that result is a surplus of just under $19,000. Recommendation is to transfer that into the reserve and, and proceed in that manner.
Any other questions? Go ahead, come for.
What's currently in that reserve?
Right, as of the end of 2023, the balance was 173,686.47. There is, as you're aware, there is a bylaw, 202012, which requires the RM to make an annual contribution from mill rate revenue into the Canada Day Reserve of $36,000 per year. So the total contributions to the reserve in 2024 would be $36,000 from mill rate revenue to the reserve plus this additional transfer into the reserve of $18,980. So the total increase in the reserve amount over December 31st, 2023 would be $54,980.92 for a projected 2024 reserve balance as of December 31st, 2024 to 172,667.34.
Go ahead.
I think we need to open up some of these reserves because we're building, building, building on it. And this, this is one that I don't think.
Yes.
We have to add a cap to it.
Yes.
Because, you know, we're putting it into there where we could be using it in other places.
A hundred percent. And so what we're going to be doing is coming forward with an amendment to bylaw 202012, recommending or no longer requiring annual contributions of $36,000 to the Canada Day Reserve. Come up with that amendment, have that amendment in place prior to adoption of the 2025 budget.
And even probably putting a cap on there so that if we want to transfer stuff in there to keep it at a certain amount?
We, we, we could do that, or we could just reduce the amount of contribution to next year's Canada Day from the operating budget.
Thank you.
Councilor Flyburn?
Yeah, I don't, I, if we eliminate that clause, then probably what we should be putting in there is at the discretion of council. To refine that reserve at the discretion of council. So we could decide, decide what goes into that reserve.
Absolutely. At any, any budget process, absolutely, budget could make a contribution to the reserve as needed. It's a good idea to have a reserve balance in there to enable cash flow.
Well, you've got quite a bit of money.
But, but we don't need, right now, we're tracking for the cost of approximately three Canada Days in the reserve, which, which is far more than, than is needed. So, so we can, we could take a holiday from the mill rate contributions for, for a few years and perhaps even from the operating budget. But again, at the council's discretion.
Well, you had a lot of sponsorships, too.
Yes, we had very healthy contributions, great work by staff and very generous contributions by. Yes, we had very healthy contributions, great work by staff and very generous contributions by the sponsors this year, which covered a large part of the, the operating expenses.
Yeah, good job. Good job, Councilor Patrick Campbell. Good job, Ashley.
Pardon me, and Councilor Patrick Campbell.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
So then I, you know, personally, I don't think we should be putting, you know, if we're already doing additional, you know, this is on top of the thirty six. I don't, I don't think we should be putting this into the, this reserve, in my opinion. Like, we're going to put it in, in there just to be transferring it back out or capping it? Like, I, I don't think this money should, it should go in general or operating, but I don't think it should go into the Canada Day Fund, in my opinion.
Yeah, it was my question is, so this money, if we don't, if we do as what Counselor Campbell suggests, where does this eighteen thousand, nine hundred, well, just go into, just go into the pot at the end and then we can do one big reserve transfer later on in the, at the end of the year or?
Well, we could.
This will show up in surplus then, right?
Yeah, we could look at it. We could, we could look and do it that way.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Or could we put this and just do a top up to the number that's in our reserve or in our bylaw? There's a.
The by, the bylaw transfers are.
The bylaw transfers since thirty six or whatever the number is.
That occurred with the, with the passing of the budget. That's, that transfer's already.
Oh, yeah, that's already done.
That's done.
Previous, yes.
Yeah.
Jane, can I?
Go ahead, Counselor.
But you're going to have a little problem because the fifty thousand is from the R M operating budget. You didn't take it out of reserves, right? So there's going to be an issue with the way that you put that in your books.
Yeah, well, we'd have to look at it. If, if, if council, if council decided not to proceed with the transfer of eighteen thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, ninety two cents into the Canada Day Reserve, we'd, we'd want to take a look at probably the best way to allocate that otherwise.
Well, you, you've got here R M, R M operating budget. So my question to you is, did you take that out of the reserves or is that just part of your regular operating budget?
That's the regular operating budget. That's.
Okay, so then it should stay, the surplus should stay in the regular operating budget. Then should it not, if that's where you're taking it from?
The, the cert, the, the.
And actually, in fact, you should probably be replenishing the operating budget because you've taken fifty thousand from it.
Well, it, 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 it isn't really a replenishment. It's, it's, it's an under expenditure.
No, I'm just saying, so if you're taking from your operating budget, like your regular checking account, fifty grand, and you have a transfer from your reserves to cover what you needed to cover for Canada Day, right? So you're still going to have to replace that fifty grand. So you've got a surplus of twenty, then you should be transferring from the reserve to cover that operating budget, should you not?
The operating budget amount was budgeted. Fifty thousand dollars was budgeted.
Also, the operating budget, you had the fifty thousand dollars and you didn't take it from reserves?
No, no, well, the, the, the operating budget amount was mill rate.
Yeah, so here's what I'm getting at. You've got your reserve, you're, you're putting into the reserve. My understanding was it's like you've got your savings account on the side. You go to do your Canada Day, you've got all your expenses, you transfer from the reserve to cover those expenses. But what it looks like you did is not that. What you did was you milled it. You kept it in the regular operating budget and then you paid out of that?
We did both. There's both an operating budget contribution and a mill rate contribution.
Okay.
And, 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 and that's the point. We don't need both. And, and that's why we, we need to look at revising the bylaw and eliminating, right now, right now, we're obligated to make that transfer, that mill rate transfer of thirty six thousand dollars, but it really is not required. And, and because of that, we've seen the Canada Day Reserve swell to one hundred seventy two thousand dollars, which, which is far more than is needed.
So I guess what we should be saying in this report is if it's a combination, we say so much from operating budget, so much from reserves.
You could, yeah.
So my question is, are we, if we're transferring the eighteen thousand, is that to replenish the reserve portion that we took then? And the other part is from the operating budget? I'm just like, for booksakes, you know, like, we've got to be careful how we do this. If it belongs to the operating budget, then we shouldn't transfer it. Then it should stay in the operating budget. If the money specifically came out of that operating budget, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And, 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 and that's, and we can look at different, different ways of, you know, how we want to manage that if, if council's inclined. The, the, the idea at this time was we have the surplus funds, put them in the reserve and then stop making these mill rate contributions to the reserve and, and probably look at taking a, a holiday in, in twenty five, twenty, or the twenty twenty five budget. I mean, at the end of the day, the funding is there and it's, it's, you know, do we reduce next year's funding or, or, or this year's really?
Yeah, I, I think, I'm okay with putting it in the reserve as long as we don't mill it again.
Right, precisely.
Yeah.
And we won't, and, and, but we, but we need to amend the bylaw, not to mill it.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
So a question then for the C A. Would, would if council decides option two to not, to not proceed? How would?
Well, we'll, we'll come forward with a different recommendation in terms of how we, how we allocate that funding.
Carry this one over and see what the other options would be?
Yeah, let's do that, number two.
You want to table a bill?
I'll make a resolution.
This, sorry, not the bill, I think. The transfer, the administrative report? Yes. We'll table that twenty, twenty twenty four Canada Reserve Fund transfer. We'll table that administrative report for it.
Are you, are you saying not to proceed with alternative two?
No, he's saying that we'll get some more information as to what, where we want to put the money and provide different options.
That's what I.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll come back with that.
Okay, we'll table it.
Okay, takes us down to fifteen point three. Abundant Life Lutheran Community, Lutheran Church Community Christmas Hamper Program. Be resolved that the Council of the Royal Municipalia of West St. Paul contributed two hundred and fifty dollars to Abundant Life Lutheran Church. Twenty twenty four Community Christmas Hamper Program. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves. Can I have a second or fourth?
Second it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Patrick can seconds it. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Can I call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Carried. Fifteen point four Manitoba Growth Renewal and Opportunities for municipalities, the Manitoba Grow Program. Be resolved that the Council of the Royal Municipalia of West St. Paul approved the following funding application submissions under the Manitoba Grow Program. Priority one, silo road construction. Priority two, access center facility improvement. And be further resolved that these projects be included in the twenty twenty five capital budget. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Cliver moves. Counselor Bichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
It's got improvements to access center. It's not listing stuff like the drop ceiling, that kind of stuff in the boardroom. It's listing interior renovations to building with community spaces, carpet, to rubberized flooring, that kind of stuff. But it's not listing anything to do with, I guess, the sound buffering in the boardroom and is it the upstairs mess, upstairs viewing area to the rank area?
Uh, yeah, that one room in the back, yes.
Well, they didn't include it in this request, so I don't know how you, you'd have to price that out and then include it in the, in the.
We did when we talked about this at last meetings.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think the intent was to capture that within interior renovations.
Okay, so it's part of your number here?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, just be sure because if, if you go and, and put the application in, you haven't included it.
It was lower when we talked about it and then we added that.
Then we bumped it up fifty.
And you bumped it up.
Fifty, yeah.
It is the higher number. It's just not listed in there as that, so.
But it's prob, it's probably listed in this interior renovations, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just didn't want it to fall through the cracks.
Yeah, no, okay. Any other questions? Can I have a mover, please? Oh, no, I did that. Can I, can I call for a vote? All in question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Carried. Takes us down to number eighteen, question carried. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Norma Alberg, three twelve Evelyn. Just a couple of quick ones. I notice on the accounts payable, the check number four, seven, two, six, four to B and K Studios was for the filming, videoing of the municipal board hearings. And I'm just wondering when those will be posted to be available for the public to see.
Or when the.
Yeah, from November seventh, eighth.
Okay.
We can, we can take a look. We'll have to talk to the municipal board in terms of the.
You want to know when the whole hearing was.
Yeah, we paid, we paid B and K, yeah, for it. That's in the register.
Counselor, I'll go M L O. She has a, raised her hand. You have it?
The municipal board hearings were not videotaped. The services referred the sound system.
It's audio.
Okay, so there isn't a videotape of them. Okay.
That would be up to the municipal board anyways, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other is just for the Grow Program, the paving on Siler. Would that start at Blackdale?
Yes, I believe it would, no.
Just west of Blackdale. Right now, there, there has been an access approach to Blackdale already done. I think somewhere in the area, about sixty feet, about twenty meters already. So it would, it would technically run from about twenty meters west of Blackdale.
And then would it come to pipeline?
No, it would run eight hundred meters west.
So would that bring it to the end of the current houses or?
Approximately that area. A little bit further, we're, we're on access to a proposed development.
Yep. Okay, so it could take in that, that development that's been approved? As twenty two?
Up to, up to the axis of it, not any further. Approximately, approximately eight hundred meters west of Blackdale.
Okay, in that subdivision, one of the conditions but, was for the road to be at municipal standards. But when that's in a D A, does that mean that the developer is to do it or that the municipality or is it up for grabs?
The terms of the D A are a bit finalized.
Thought it was signed off this summer.
No.
No, okay.
I haven't signed it off yet, so.
All right. So when something like that is in a D A, it, does it, is it a statement that the developer is to do that? Like if it's having water sewer roads?
Not necessarily. It's just, just however it's specified.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Eleanor Link, ten forty five Toshack Road. I also have a question about the payment register and preceding registers. I asked a question on October twenty fourth check register. There was a clerical error made on check four, seven, zero, nine, zero to Catalyst H R for ten thousand, seventy eight dollars and seventy eight cents. The error was corrected when the new check was made to Catalyst Technology Canada for the same amount. But where is check four, seven, oh, nine, one for Catalyst H R accounted for? That check was spoiled, but it still has to be accounted for, but I don't see that it was avoided or accounted for. So I'm wondering, has the procedure for indicating spoiled checks on payment registers been changed? And also, I want to say that there were a series of sixty eight checks numbered four, four, six, three, nine to four, four, seven, oh, seven that were not used in the past. I asked the R M about these checks. They were never voided. So they were not accounted for publicly.
So there's sixty eight checks. There was an error on the security number, which means I have to ask the.
Pardon, I can't hear you.
Just wait, I have to ask the M L O. Question, she's busy right now. So a while ago, we had all those checks that had the wrong security stamp on it. So how were those checks dealt with? Because obviously they didn't go through. And I believe you reprinted all those checks. And the other checks were destroyed? Or how did you count for it?
Yes, I'd have to look back, Mr. Mayor. I don't recall.
It's a lot of checks that have not been accounted for in the public eye. And neither has check four, seven, oh, nine, one. So what's going on with, are you avoiding checks? So that the public can see that they get voided or, or not?
Okay, well, I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. And I have questions about the Manitoba Grow Program as well. And I'm sorry, I could not hear everything that Mrs. Alberg said, so I might repeat some of her questions. I, I couldn't hear. I would like to know, the, the one, in this grow grant, you can ask for two projects, which you've done. But only one project might be funded or both projects might be funded. So I would like, they will pick the one that maybe, if they pick anything, they'll pick the, the one that is prioritized by the R M. So you had to prioritize your projects. So what were the reasons for prioritizing the Seeler Road reconstruction as a priority over the access center facility improvements?
Our thing, the reason is because Silo Road is in need of repair. It is in bad shape, so which is why it was prioritized. Some of these other items at Access Center, they are a priority, but they are more or less just to enhance the building while, so if you had to choose between one or the two, we'd get better bang out of our buck on Silo Road than we would Access Center.
And it's a bigger amount, so if we could get it granted, why would we pay it out of the R M's pocket?
Yep.
Okay. Now, then, so the amount has something to do with it. Was it considered that those improvements to the access center would affect large number of people who go to the access center? Just a question. Don't answer that one.
I'm not sure how it would affect them, but.
Well, they'd enjoy it better, wouldn't they? They'd enjoy the facilities of the community better.
We might get both.
But at the same time, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the, the community would enjoy that not coming off their mill, which is put onto their taxes. So that would enhance a bigger portion.
Okay, now I've got some information to, context to give you and more questions. In the twenty eighteen and the twenty eight, nineteen budgets, planning information that I still have identified Silo Road or Seeler Road for asphalt reconstruction with a standard pavement width for seven meters. And that work was to be done five or six years ahead of time. And in both budget, it was, it was given that the price was projected to be in five or six years, three hundred and fifteen thousand. The administration report today gives a budget figure for twenty twenty five for Seeler Road reconstruction as six hundred and fifty thousand. More than double the amount. Why is there such a discrepancy for costs projected in twenty eighteen and nineteen and the amount estimated for the twenty twenty five budget for Seeler Road reconstruction?
You realize that was seven years ago.
It was projected cost seven years ago.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't always, we also went from COVID where prices escalated.
Not just inflation, when they did that first, whatever, sixty meters. Not just inflation, when they did that first, whatever, sixty meters, and they checked the base underneath it and realized that it's topsoil underneath there and there's no other, so that's where the cost has gone up, because now it's not a resurfacing, it's a complete reconstruction of the road.
So, now you've got a, an accurate estimate?
I wouldn't say it's accurate.
You've got the most accurate estimate.
More accurate than we had then, when there was no digging done on the road. If you look at what our tender numbers came in per linear meter now, to what the length of that road is, I'm sure that's the numbers that have been used on here, now that we know what the underlayment of the road is right now, so.
So, who's done the estimate this time?
Excuse me, Counselor. Counselor Cliver, go ahead.
Okay, so you know, being on council, that when we do the road budget, it's an estimate always of how much we're going to spend.
We're presented with, we're presented with an estimate, but it was projected.
Okay, but projections are invaluable, right? So, then we have to go to tender, we get the real price, and sometimes in our budgets, then they come back to us and say, hey, we could do a few more roads with this contract, right? So, we don't always know the exact price.
Of course.
I think what you're trying to get at, and which I'll address to you, is, is the developer going to pay a portion of silo road?
Oh, my questions are coming.
I think that's a question that you really want to ask.
It's coming.
It's coming, there you go. So, we always do recovery costs with developers, so there might be two developers there, and we would probably go for recovery costs on those. So, that the burden is not on the taxpayer, but on the development and the developers. And we've done that with lots of, lots of different things.
Now, can I go on with my questions now, Dan?
Yes, go ahead, I was trying to help you.
Yeah, I'm getting what you're saying. Subdivision twenty two twenty nine forty six is planned for west of the present silo road, so are improvements to the road scheduled prior to the subdivision going in?
Yes, they were.
Have, in that case, have, has council considered the wear and tear on, on a brand new road of heavy construction vehicles coming in on that road? When Meadowlands was being developed, Addis Road, after the railway tracks, had to wait for improvements because there would be heavy construction vehicles using that road, which there were. It was in bad shape, too, really bad shape. So, different approach here, fix the road nice, and then use it for construction vehicles.
Here, if I may?
Go ahead, Counselor Cliver.
Just to address that, you know that this subdivision has been changed to two acre lots, so you're not going to have any infrastructure going in there, you're not going to have, the only thing that will go in there is wells and septic fields that people have to put in themselves, and then the developer will put in a road for the different lots.
Okay, thank you. Now, I understood that there were nineteen lots planned.
Thank you. Do you have a question here?
Question period.
Has that been changed for that development? Was, is, has an increase in density planned in that subdivision?
No, a decrease in density's been planned.
A decrease, okay. So, fewer than nineteen lots will be in there, okay, that's good news. And, and will the developer be contributing to the upgrades to silo road?
The DA's not signed on that, so there's no, I don't think we should be discussing that, the DA's still in the works, and it's not, it's not finished yet, so we shouldn't be discussing publicly how that DA's not.
Well...
And it's not on here, which is part of question period, is what's on the agenda?
Well, what's on the agenda is...
Silo road reconstruction.
Correct, and...
That's for the residents that live on there.
It's for the residents that live on it, and it is also going to benefit the new subdivision.
But the DA's not completed, so there's stuff that we cannot discuss openly right now that the DA's done.
Well, I would hope, I would hope that council considers...
I think it's, we've discussed it already.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we'll go on camera now. Yeah, be resolved that in accordance with section one fifty two of the municipal act, council does not move in camera to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages in respect in which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality ability to carry out its activities and negotiations. And be resolved that in accordance with section one eighty three dash D of the municipal act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular meeting of council, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves, can I have a second, or please?
A second.
Counselor Campbell seconds it, any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. Okay, so our rising report is that we had a meeting for community development with the GNS Developments. I would now to adjourn the meeting at seven forty seven. Be resolved that this meeting of council is then adjourned at seven forty seven PM. Royal Municipalities of Western Paul, can I call for a... Counselor Patakan, Counselor Bichetti moves it, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Counselor Patakan seconds it, any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, carried.